Everyone's here, so consistent with the governor's orders. Suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and/or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the link provided. If you do not have a camera or microphone or on your computer, you may use the following dialing number that's provided. Please only dial in or use computer and not both as feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. I ask anyone who participates to display your proper name and if you do speak, we would prefer that you use video so that we can see you as though you're at a regular meeting. So I'm going to take a roll call vote. Bill Spalding.
Here, I was on mute.
Theo.
Here.
And Megan.
Here.
And I'm here too. Alright, I know that through a mix up the meeting minutes for the last, our last meeting came out a little bit late. Did everyone have a chance to review them?
Yes.
Yep.
Alright, did anyone have any comments on them?
No.
Alright, do I hear a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Alright, do we hear a second?
Second.
Seconded, roll call votes. Megan?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Alright. Alright, I know Bill, you said Aaron's going to be with us shortly.
Yes.
You want to get into the item number three for discussion of post zoning amendment for the Lake area?
Sure. Let's see, and I totally apologize for getting the documents that I was working on to you much later than I anticipated. I did have a conversation with Tom Mullen and it went really well and this is the first thing I want to start with. So what I would like what I would like to cover is the direction we're going in in my discussion with Tom Mullen, which was a phone conversation. To review the Lake District and the idea of a Lake Business District and how that could be proposed and some of the work that Theo has reviewed as well to bring that in as part of what a Lake Business District can be and what other towns or cities have done in that. And I know there wasn't a lot there, but it would be still good to bring that in. Then I'd like to go through the zoning bylaws to the sections that this would affect. Like if we were to go forward with this as a planning board to issue warrants at town meeting for the articles for the town meeting warrant for the fall. So I also want to go through that timeline again, sorry. To make sure that's still realistic and making sure we're working back from that. So Mr. Chair, I'd like to share my screen. And trying to make sure I start with the right one, not the meeting notes. Running District. Okay. Oh. Those are the meeting minutes. Okay, so can you see the screen in the Lake Business Zoning District?
Yes.
So after that excellent meeting that we had with the group discussion and really thinking we could have a new zoning district proposed. My conversation with Tom Mullen regarding like what would that take, like what would it, what would need to be updated? So we would need to look at Article Three districts which had, which has, which contains establishment, general descriptions and zoning map, and I'll go through some of this information. He also mentioned, as we know, Table One, Table Use of Regulations, and this is some of the documentation I shared with you. So you'll be able to click on that and go right to it. And we can look at that tonight if we need to. I don't want to get too far into Table Two, the Table of Dimensional Regulations, which is the one that we've reviewed and I did update that to add what could be in the Lake Business District and hopefully that would really be say, very similar to the neighborhood business. So Tom Mullen mentioned that with the three different options we're looking at, that creating a new zoning district as the Lake Business District would be the cleaner, better path. He said it will take a lot of work, but it's less complicated when it comes to, as we talked about in our last meeting, how map or spot zoning, looking at map changes for existing places and changing them from business or limited business to neighborhood business could become very difficult and have consequences for other neighborhood businesses. We could also look at creating an overlay district and he thought that was also a little cumbersome and could be misleading. I also brought up the point, Matt, that you brought up about how we're looking at where an overlay district usually allows people to do more or property owners to enhance or do more with their property, where we're being a little bit more restrictive, but also looking at some incentives. So all that in the conversation that Tom and I had was wonderful. He was really helpful with all this. And he thought the direction of the Lake District, creating a new zoning Lake Business District would, is the better path. So after the conversation went through, we did discuss, he pointed me to a couple of directions, a couple of places to look. And one place to look was what, what is happening with the Massachusetts General Law, Section Five, Adoption and Change of Zoning Ordinance. So I read through this and not going to read through it now. But this is something that made a lot of sense to me to understand what we have to create and what we have to do. And then prior to adoption of the zoning ordinance for the regulations. So there's some information in here that we want to make sure we follow and Tom will help us with this. So I added this to our documents. That way we can, could take a look at it and if we have to reference it, we can. So thinking about our timeline and what we can do, I went through and thought about a couple of different pieces of this. One being 196, General Description. How does this relate to the neighborhood business, the limited business and the business districts? So what I came up with in wording was a few different options. So these three options that you can see, thinking about, so LB, Limited Business, already takes Lake Business District, well, the LB, so is it Lake Q Business? Is it Lake Business District? Is it Lake District? So one option there to review, like what would this be? And different pieces of this, for example, Lake Business District includes business areas adjacent to or close proximity to Lake, of Lake Quantapawet. Rather than the town at large, permitted uses would not have an adverse environmental impact on the lake. So this to me was the very basic part of it. And I'm looking at these three options that we can discuss tonight to see what pieces do we want. What changes with this one, second one, permitted uses for office, retail and restaurant businesses, business uses, uses and possibly multi-residence uses, multiple residence uses with a special permit. So more information in there. And this one, Lake Business District includes, rather than the town, permitted uses per Table One, so it pushes the information to the use table, incentives available for providing open space at and pedestrian access to lake. So I want to make sure that the different pieces that we discussed in our last meeting got in here. And I know tonight we want to figure out how to bring that information into one clean description. Because remember, our goal for this part is to look at a general description, not define the whole thing. The reason I want us to go through this exercise is because I believe by doing this exercise, as well as looking at these three points, that could be the beginning draft of what a Lake Business District is, will help us better define what our articles could end up being. It really helped me understand more. Before getting into the Lake Business District, I wanted to stop here and to see if there were any questions or comments from the board about this part specifically and thinking we could stop and talk about this now, or I could go on to some more of the information and then come back to each of the three pieces.
I'd say let's sort of decide this one and move on to the next step.
Okay. So Matt and Board, this is really just looking at a general description. And I did go back and review the video to help understand what each board member was thinking about and understanding and sharing. So I know there were pieces in here. Let me get rid of all the highlight now that we've done that part. And Matt, I don't know if you want to start by looking at which pieces of these descriptions seem to read better than others?
Um, yeah, I'm sort of looking at this for the first time.
I know, again, I apologize for getting that to you in the last two hours.
I think the first one would be a better description of what we really want to do. So but I don't know if I particularly like the LQB.
Yeah.
I think the LBD might be the better, better option for that, but that's just my.
No, that's part of it, defining this and thinking about opinions before we go live. The reason I scrolled down a little bit too is so you can see the wording of what the limited business, business and neighborhood business and how they do read. So keeping it in the same flavor as what's there.
Yeah, that would be my, how to, how to move forward with that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, Matt, you're saying you prefer the, the first of the three?
Yeah, I like the narrative on, on the first one. Although I like the LBD designation better than the LQB.
Yeah. I would generally agree with you about using the first definition. The I think I might, you know, part of what we've talked about really is preserving the landmark, preserving, like, you know, so I think I could see permitted uses would not have an adverse environmental impact on the lake or adverse environmental impact, comma, you know, detrimental impact to landmark, you know, try, I can, we can think a little bit more about, you know, language again around scenic quality. Because that, and, and pedestrian access. So.
Well, I, I think you may want to do an adverse environmental or visual impact on the lake. Some of the, when you add in incentives available for providing open space and pedestrian access to the lake, that only applies to a few parcels. So if you want to add that in there, you wouldn't get much buy-in from any parcels that are further removed from the lake, but you know, within the lake area. So that's why I might take that out because that would be, you know, certain, certain parcels included would have, would not apply to them because they don't about the lake.
Right.
So.
That makes sense.
That's kind of dark. Trying to figure out a way to keep this live. So as we go along.
I like the second one in regards to the fact that it it, it sounds similar to the way the other ones are structured. But I also like the fact that the first one talks about permitted use, like that permitted uses. So maybe it's a combination of the two of like permitted uses would not have an adverse environmental impact on the lake, but would include office, retail and restaurant business and possibly multiple resident uses with a special permit. So like combining those two sentences in one. I don't like the third option because none of the other descriptions direct someone to a table for the permitted uses. So that's why I like options one and two better. But I like spelling it out because it's spelled out in some of the other descriptions as well that are, what, what are the, the uses that are allowed and what's with a special permit and what's not? But so that's my thoughts, but I'm, I'm, I'm open to either one or two or a combination of one and two.
Okay, and you could see I'm trying to listen and combine as I go along. And I think Theo also had in there a scenic quality or so how do we think about that being in there?
Yeah, I some, some language around the, you know, the landmark nature of of the lake. Or the landmark character of the lake and not have an adverse impact on the landmark character of the lake.
Right, I can see this encourage the growth of a healthy. So encourage the growth or encourage, kind of like that word in here. Kind of like the idea of the word encourage being part of this.
Yeah, encourage the preservation of the, the landmark character of the lake.
Are we getting too wide again?
Well, we've heard a lot about visuals, so I think we need to tie that in.
Yes.
Talked a lot about, you know, sightlines and trying to protect them. So if you, if that's part of it, you may want to include that in here from the start.
Okay. So encourage preservation of so now we have scenic quality. Is it thinking, are we now thinking of that word vista?
I'm, I'm, I'm definitely gravitating towards landmark.
Okay, that does have a big pull when you think of landmarks like federal and the district, landmarks district. Are, were you thinking in that direction, Theo, or is it more that it's just a landmark?
Well, like I, I found a couple of examples of like New Milford, Connecticut has a Lake Business District and they also have a landmark district. So like, and you know, the, you know, part of that was sort of framed around historic preservation, but it was also referring to land areas that have value as town landmarks. So not, you know, not going as far as like, you know, Cape Cod, you know, net, you know, natural preserve being really scenic and, you know, like a national landmark, but calling it a lowercase town landmark, I think, I think does speak to the sort of, right, the general importance that we place on the lake as a town landmark. And then, yeah, you can delete scenic quality.
Is it preservation or is it scenic? Like what preservation of the lake? Like, does that go away?
Yeah, I think you can take it away.
And we're not looking for something final. We're just looking for something that encompasses this description similar to what we have here for the other descriptions. So we're not saying anything about Table One, which I think is okay. We're not specifically saying Lake Quantapawet. We could just proximity of the lake, or do we want to specifically say Lake Quantapawet?
I, I think you want to say Lake Quantapawet.
Mm-hmm. The word proximity always scares me. What does proximity mean? But includes business areas in proximity of Lake Quantapawet.
Well, the, they're going to be defined, so I don't know if you really need to have that. If they're going to be in the district or they're not going to be, so.
Right, and that will be a zoning map.
Yeah, so I don't know if you need to do the proximity at all.
Okay.
Alright, so I guess we got the, the rough outline for that. We could probably move on.
Right, so I'll make sure that's highlighted. Okay. So next, what I went to, let me just add another page break. It just seemed easier to try to get it all on one page so I can see it and you can all see it. The next part is looking at the definition of what would be in the zoning bylaws. And after reviewing a few different overlay districts and a few different, the limited business district and the wording, a lot of what those zoning bylaws were written as really breaks down to a couple of sections. So I think we need to start with, what are the main things that we want to control? So explaining uses permitted, what uses are permitted in here? So after the uses that are, like, we define that, it could be one, two, three, under A. B, dimensional controls. And that's when we start to look at Table Two, which we can do that. And then what's the special permit application process? So like any of these zoning bylaws, if we do look at Table One, the use and how what's allowed, what's not allowed. So the yes or the no, but then there's also the special permit. And with the special permit, I feel is where the incentives would happen. So by special permit, if your land is adjacent to the lake or attached to, however we want to phrase it, incentives to create pedestrian access as well as open space. So I think that has the C section, that's not, sorry, this section C to, to control how that special permit. So I did look and like, what section is that? And, and if we're doing the new section, so I started, I pulled the wording together. I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on this. I just wanted to make sure as a board, we understand how big this will grow and what our responsibility will be with it for this and working with Tom Mullen and possibly even bringing in other people that have worked on the town zoning bylaws in the past. And I'm thinking like people like Dan Lieber or a few other people in town that are very familiar with our bylaws and charter that have been on committees like that. So Matt, again, I just wanted to open this up to a discussion and I don't think this would be a long one, but if anybody has any comments or things I might be missing that we should add.
I don't have anything off my head right now.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay. So I'd like to bring up Table Two, which would be part of this. Can you all see that? The full extent of Table Two? This is the working table again, the full table. If the documentation that I sent out, you can click on this and go to the link. So I narrowed it down to what's around the lake, the single, the general residence, the business and limited business and neighborhood business. So thinking about a Lake Business District, Matt, I did like LBD as well, as you can see here. All I really did was copy up what's for the neighborhood business because as you know, I feel strongly that the neighborhood business seems to be the right direction for starting point for the Lake Business District. Not going to go through all these, but I will go through the asterisk that I put there and you can see down here, discuss adding incentives for providing open space at and pedestrian access to the lake. I also want to add in something Theo brought up at our last meeting where it would be the further you are from the lake, it could have a stepping effect. Think about the new apartments or the newer apartments along North Ave from the Knights of Columbus to Juliana Salon and the dealerships. Maybe when you're that far from the lake, meaning on the other side of North Ave in this case, that there is an allowance through a special permit to be one story higher than the thirty, the three stories or 35 foot maximum height. And the density, maybe it could be, allow more coverage.
So what would be the incentive for providing greater access to the lake, say, for the Lakeside Office Park? So they we want, we wanted to use that as example for a pedestrian access right along the lake and a buffer in there. How would they be rewarded by providing that amenity to the town?
I'm not sure. And that was what we were discussing and I think Theo had a good point on that in the last meeting where is it, do they, are they allowed to step back from the height? And when you were saying this in the last meeting, Theo, all I could picture was the McCollum Building in South Boston that has storefront at the first two stories with retail and office space on the second floor. Restaurant retail on the first floor, the second floor is office and then it starts to step back. So that whole second floor roof actually becomes a green roof with a garden and a deck. And then it steps back to the residents, which then go one, two, three stories where each residents has stepped back. What it does create on one side though is at the McCollum Building, like seven feet straight up on that industrial side. So but the lakeside would be the incentive would be to create an aesthetically visual pleasing building with staying within, I don't know, heights that, and density that we as a board decide on and the public has input on.
So I, I think this would be a this discussion is getting some of the property owners. this discussion is getting some of the property owners up there to say, what would it take for you to have some buy-in on this and, you know, what, you know, what's, what needs to be done in order for this to make it feasible for you to consider this? So that, that's the important thing. That's where we need to buy in in order to get this through. So remember, we want these districts to, uh, or this businesses in this district to succeed and to thrive and to actually be a benefit to the town. So we don't want to be too restrictive on that without letting some incentive. So. So if we want to leave this as, you know, an open item, or I don't know if you want to sort of get more resolution on this.
I think when, um, Matt, I think if we do go to public, um, comments this evening, that, that would be great to actually get some feedback on it and to think about what it could be. I know it's hard to see, but like as I think about the lake over here and that there is pedestrian open space setback from the lake, but then it becomes the retail restaurant, um, restaurant space with office above, and then it steps back with, you know, not that we can design the building and this would be on the street side, thinking North Ave. Not that we could design it for the people, the property owners, but thinking about like ideally, what are we looking for? Because this is what I'm looking for. But I want our planning board and the public to, to also give input to shape all that. But when if you didn't see on that little sketch, the parking happens in that P, like in that circle behind the retail and restaurant below the residence. And maybe this is enough for us to move on to Matt, to the next stuff.
Can I chime in?
Oh, please.
Yeah. No, I think what you're putting out there is really great. Um, I think it's more of an.
I'm sorry, I'm Erin. It should have been Matt that granted you permission to talk. I apologize.
No, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
No problem.
Um, I think what you just did was really great. Um, I think, yes, if Matt wants to ask public participation, I think that would be nice too, but the only thing, you know, I hope between Vision 2030 and the master plan, we can figure out what we want the area to be, because I know how important it is to people. And, um, yeah, I, I, I don't have anything more to add, but you know, there's already stuff there. So how do we make it better? I guess is my bigger question to people out there.
Yep.
And then when I was talking about businesses, I think we need to explicitly invite those business owners to join. And you have to ask them to participate because I, I think we really need to listen to them and see what their thoughts are and, and how they envision their properties moving forward too. So we can sort of work with them together to make sure that, uh, we get something everyone is, uh, at least not gonna say happy with, but acceptable for. So.
Yes, that's a very good point.
So this is, um, and Matt, I, I, again, I don't want to get into the weeds of all this, but I think as a board, we take those hearings, uh, public hearings, and that's where we start to really narrow down and discuss what each of these can be.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm even thinking we, we might have some input before we get to the public hearing because during a public hearing, we have to have a draft to.
Yeah.
So I, I'm thinking even before that, so like within the next couple of meetings, try to get their input. So when we write this, we're substantially, uh, to the point that we want to go forward. We don't want to, we don't want to get something roughed out, write an article and then heavily change it because then we're going to have to explain that on the floor of Tom meeting. That never goes well.
I agree. And the last part that I wanted to bring up. It's like business zoning. Believe this is if I share. Okay. So I took it all the way to the end and I know I didn't send this to you because I just did this in like the last hour and a half. Just really thinking about what, um, what could those articles be? So I went back to previous town warrants and I looked at this and something Tom Mullin said in our conversation the other day was about, you know, what, and I guess this is really important. It's more about the process. In the timeline that I presented at our last meeting, it was working backwards from an October, I'm sorry, November 8th, and then back and back and back all the way to when do we have to have the deadline into town council? But he brought up a good point and it's going to take a little bit more research and another conversation with Tom that to make this work properly, and it's in the wording in that, section five in the general laws, that the town council needs to receive notice and publicize that before the planning board reviews and holds public hearing. What wasn't clear in general, in the general laws, chapter five, was that if the planning board is actually petitioning for the article, does it have to go to town council first for a public meeting for a review and discussion by town council? And then sent back to the planning board similar to a citizen's petition would? And that was the part that Tom and I, um, Tom was going to find out more about and I will follow up with that. Cause that puts another possible three weeks or more at the minimum into this process before we can hold a public hearing. So that scared me a little bit, not a lot and it didn't seem to scare Tom. So meaning time length and time wise and all. But I thought I'd bring that up as a, a point in the meeting. So that pushed me to think, you know, what would these articles be? And I think as a board, we need to think not the long description of what it is, but what would that article read? So I took a crack at what looks like, you know, four, one being a, a new zoning district. So proposing a new lake business district to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law, town of Wakefield. Again, I pulled from what I've seen in previous lake business district, the lake business includes proximity permitted use. So this would be a little bit of what that description that we were just reviewing could be. Meaning it wouldn't have this information in it, but the rest of the information that we just reviewed. This zoning of this, um, article, if it passes, it needs to pass with two thirds at town meeting, if that goes through, then we proceed to use changes table one. So if we have now a lake business district, we need to identify in that table you, of use regulations, a new column and each column with a designation of each use in whether it's not allowed, allowed, or, or under special permit. The next one would be dimensional changes for table two. What are the, what's the height and density? Pretty much that table we just looked at. Or to see what the town, I, I can hear the town moderator reading these. So I hope that happens for real. Uh, zoning map changes. To me, that would be the last one. So if this all goes through, or maybe this is the second one, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law, town of Wakefield amending the zoning map dated and district. So the properties listed shown on the Wakefield accessories map as parcels and we list each one that were currently within the business district to the lake business district. To me, this is the biggest one. This is identifying each of those properties and changing their zoning.
Well, they would have to be the, the business district or the limited business district.
True. And, yep, I'll, I'll put that in there.
And are you, you sure we need to go with this as a four step process? Or because any one of these not passing basically, uh, brings down the others.
Yes, especially the first one.
So I'm thinking you may want to see if we can just do this basically as one article that changes, you know, that does all this because, you know, I can see certain provisions going through and others not, and that brings down the rest of them. So.
Yep.
People want to vote it down, they should just vote it down or not, you know, pick it apart and make it so it cannot act on its own.
Agreed. And, and that's what I'm hoping back for feedback tonight and then to work with Tom Mullin as our board to make sure this is all, um, in the right wording. It keeps growing. So it's like, as you get into it, there's so much to see. And this has helped me to really understand the volume and the, the, um, potential of pulling this all together with input from the property owners, the town and our board.
So does anyone else have any, any ideas on this? Would you rather see it as, uh, a four step process or a, you know, one process that accomplishes all of these parts? Obviously, any one of these could become, come up, comment and edit on, on the floor of Tom meeting if, if needed, but I, I think it's better to move it forward as one, uh, one item. Because we could come up with a new zoning, like, uh, a, a new lake business district, but then it doesn't have any dimensional requirements. It's kind of an orphan district out there that, um, then needs to be cleaned up at another, a later point. So that's why I'm thinking it needs to go all at once.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I would agree as well.
All right. So I guess we just need to make sure that that's doable to put these all through as one article.
Right. And that would be a great question for Tom Mullin to understand. So read similar to what's in front of you here.
Yeah, unfortunately vetting this real time is, is the problem because we, we come up with thoughts here and then for us to move forward, we need to make sure that while we're moving forward is, uh, acceptable. So we kind of need to go back and talk to council and see if that's
Yep.
appropriate path. So.
Yeah, but, but it all hangs together and, um, uh, I, I think that's why you're ultimately able to, uh, even though it seems like a big, uh, there, there will be a lot of content. It sounds, it sounds doable or it's, it, it, you know, it sort of sounds like if you approve the, the concept, then you are agreeing to the detail of changes to table one and table two.
Yep.
The, uh, the three week, uh, sort of, uh, uh, process with town council. And that, that's not fatal to our timeline, uh, of getting it to before, uh, to the, the November meeting.
Oh, I don't want to, um, speak for Tom Mullin and I am paraphrasing our conversation. That was a phone conversation. That he didn't see that it made any type of sense for our planning board to have to to have, hold a public hearing for an article that would go to town meeting for the warrant, to have to first go to town council, create the ad, have it publicized for town council, and then come back to the planning board to do the whole thing again. It just didn't seem to make sense.
Okay.
That our board can just do this and then provide town council with our report for the town warrant, this article before the due date.
I, I, if I remember correctly, I believe that's how, uh, the last article that the board did is, is that we proposed it, advertised it and sent it to them saying this, this is going to be on, you know, on the town, on the warrant for town meeting. But I'm, again, I'm not completely positive on that. That's my recollection.
Right. And it was the general laws, chapter five, looking at that, that made us, that became part of our discussion because of how it's written in there. Like I recall that too, Matt, because it wasn't too long ago that I remember Paul Reviss, our town planner, previous town planner, doing exactly that. But I didn't, what I did, couldn't recollect is that, did that happen before we started it? Like, I don't, I didn't remember that part of it. Okay.
All right. So for, uh, have you looked at parcels to be included on this at all, or are we still some ways from that?
I don't think we're aways from that. I think it's, um, I can pull up the zoning map and we can look, but I believe it's the same pieces. And I know Erin had mentioned, just looking at the, Erin's still here. I was looking, Erin had mentioned, yes, the property owners to get in touch with them to bring them into our meetings as a discussion. So I think we, we, we can identify them as properties. We talked about lakeside as one. Property owners of the limited business and business district at the top of the lake that are still not, um, part of this. And then the properties across North Ave at the northern, northern part, which are the dealerships all the way down to the Knights of Columbus. And the other part would be right adjacent to Vets Field. So Church Street, the first few going down on north and then across the tracks, Prospect to Elm, the dry cleaner convenience store, auto body. I think that covers all the ones that fall into this. And Matt, I know you brought up what happens at the common, the church, um, properties that are in there. And I, I have to say, I think we leave all that out, but I, I don't know.
Well, yeah, and that was a discussion on if, if there was a, a proximity from the lake overlay district. You know, to capture certain parcels, we may unintentionally capture others, but, uh, so in this case, we're calling out exact parcels. So there's be no question whether parcels included or not.
Yes. You know, I, I am at work. I don't have my personal computer, so I don't have that other document that I did. It's in my email, but I think if I just pulled up the zoning map, it would help us. And of course I'm using our website to find all that. It's handy.
Beautiful.
Thank you, Erin and Jen McDonald. Oops. I almost left the meeting instead of sharing. What was that? So I think you can see the screen. I pull up. Matt, I like having the captions at the bottom, but they're getting in the way. Matt, I like having the captions at the bottom, but they're getting in the way. So I believe you can see the map. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Looking at this property, so um, let's start at the top of the lake, just because that's what I started with when the descriptions. The pink is limited business and then we have business across here. We have neighborhood business on the other side of Lowell. We have the dealerships, Juliana Salon, the new developments along North Ave down to the Knights of Columbus. And I don't, Knights of Columbus is not in that, so the last property. Uh, Lake, Lakeside is part of limited. Sorry, Matt, go ahead.
Would, would you include like uh, the Honda dealership across 128 or is that? Is that's, well, that's their, their front yard of the Honda dealership. It's not actually, it's their parking area. Would that parcel be included or not?
Oh, I don't know. That's a good. I see 128 as a boundary, a big one. I don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the other side of North Ave, you wouldn't see North Ave as a boundary though, right?
No, I, I believe we want to include. I, I don't know a better name for it except for saying the train tracks inside the train tracks between the train tracks and the lake at this point.
Okay.
Which doesn't help us down here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Matt, go ahead.
No, I, I, I'm just trying to talk through what, what we're thinking of including, so.
Right, and I think from previous meetings, we decided that we're not looking at a boundary line that would be drawn out. But we're looking at naming these properties. When we move down towards Vets Field, we have um, on the other side of the train tracks. Emerson and Elm, so Elm, excuse me, becomes that. Area here where the laundromat. Autobody, convenience store Autobody. Um, and then on the other side of church going down north. It's a few properties here and, and I guess that's what we discuss and figure out. Is it all the way to Yale? Does it stop at a certain distance where if you are, and this comes into vistas and views and aesthetic quality? How far back do we want to think about shadows and everything else? Because in this business district. We went back to the table, I think, you know, we, we're dealing with special permits and variances. That, man, I don't want to just be on the side. It could be Harvard Mills, you know, it's bring some of these properties together and. Is there a variance or a special permit and all of a sudden it's eighty-five feet, so. Those are the properties. I'm sorry, Matt, one more thing, because it was part of our conversation. It seems like on the other side of Lafayette, this business district is further away from the lake. But it is part of the scenic landmark, common rockery, rockery and the rest of that. So do we consider?
So that, that would include part of the church property.
Right here, yeah.
Which this is one of those odd uh, zoning quirks where the original zoning lines were. Setback distance from a road and they end up cutting parcels in half, so.
Like artichokes and, yeah.
Correct. So there's that there and then across the street, you've got that apartment building, which is actually. Uh, in a business district, so I don't know if you want to include that, but that's.
Honestly, I think that's going to be part of our discussion. And when it opens up to public hearing and we really get into the details. But I, I think we should include it as part of what we discuss and then think of subtracting it or expanding it.
Alright, then we may want to do like an outline of, of the parcels. So when we do get to that discussion, it's clear that these are the ones we. We had envisioned to include unless people give us a reason to add more or subtract some. Then we go from there.
Okay.
And then how about up at the head of the lake uh, on Lowell? Are you including those two or?
The neighborhood business?
Yes.
Yeah, so from Cumberland. All the way to the Rotary, I guess. And I mean, that's what this is, right? That's the extent of Lowell. Right now, that's neighborhood business. So do we not worry about the neighborhood business or because it's limited to three stories and thirty-five feet? Or do we bring that into the, eh, actually, this would be that incentive side. It would be better for those properties to come along into the lake district. Where they might have more advantages for types of uses they can. Create. I was trying not to use the word develop. Seems to be very negative.
I would, I would say this is another area of uh, for public comment to add and subtract. Because I can also see an argument to be made for um, the zoning there is sort of. Uh, acceptable and already in sort of spirit with what we're trying to accomplish, so. That would argue for, eh, you know, leaving it out of uh. The like this, this new lake business district. So that we then are just focusing on the pink stripe, the, the business.
Well, one of my comments, so. This district, we ended up with a gas station that is, you know, adjacent to the lake. Is that, is that, would that have, do we believe that's would be a successful use of that land up there? I mean, that's, that's what we have. Is that what people had envisioned that area to be like?
I did not.
Yes, so maybe, you know, that might be a plus for, for changing that. But I don't know if, if this is going to prevent the gas station from going in there in the future or, or what, so.
Right.
Because obviously that's right by the lake, right by the highway. That is valuable land for commuters, so. I can only imagine what. Potentially could go in there that would attract people to drive in and. Do something quick and drive out, so um, I don't know if this is gonna. The new business district, Lake Business District would help prevent that or not. So just something to look at.
Right, and I think our options would be to look at each of the uses in table one. And run down the list um, as a board and apply a N, a Y or S P. And Matt, to your point earlier too, I think if um, anything is amended at town meeting. I feel it would be probably from that table one. Um, hopefully, that's all that would need to be amended after we've gone through a few public hearings and, and listened to. Property owners, public. And so.
The goal of the public hearing is to vet all that stuff beforehand, so we don't have to do that.
Agreed.
But that's not necessarily how the process plays out, so.
I am really excited that you'll be the chair and have to read all this and stand up there. Sorry. Don't think about getting sick.
I can have an assistant, so.
I know, we're gonna need, I think it's gonna be all board contribution, obviously. It will need to be, so.
Don't, don't lose your first vote.
Yeah, that's true.
Alright, so where do we want to proceed from here?
Well, um. I, I've really enjoyed going through all this information and learning so much about it. I feel more confident that this lake business district is the correct path. I do feel we have support from Erin, from Tom, Tom Mullen and. I'm, I'm hoping to speak sep- separately or we could talk to Jonathan Chines. About how to approach this part with working with um, the town council as well to make sure we're getting input. Um, something Theo brought up that was really interesting too is Vision 2030. And our next Vision 2030 happens to be the Monday, the day before our next planning board meeting. So if you're not doing anything that evening, please tune in seven to nine. If you go to the town website, you'll see the Vision 2030 Zoom meeting. Um, invite. Let's see. I don't know, Matt, I, I, I'd love to hear from the board before we decide to um. Open it to public or not, but there's um. There's a lot of pieces to this and I, I think we have it. I think we have all the pieces lined up. And all the framework for it to really start to fill in what we need to um, pull a description together. To create an ad. I'd like to, to, to get this ad written and done by our next meeting, so it can be. Put in the paper and we can start these pub, the pub, the fourteen days to the public hearing. So I, I know this meeting was our critical meeting to, to put everything out there on the table, so we can um, come up with that description. So I'm hoping tonight, we have something really close that Tom Mullen can review. And then at our next planning board meeting on twenty-eighth, is that right?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-two, okay, thanks. Um, twenty-two that we can um, that night just be, just have it. And Susan can, and Erin can take care of the, the ad.
Well, I think we need to have uh, some business input before we, you, you're talking about writing the ad. Before we have any informal input from business owners. I, I kind of think we need to get that. First, before we write this. Because um, whatever is written. Basically has to be, has to go into the warrant and then we start changing it after the fact on town meeting, so. We still have a lot of details to work out, so I think we're still a ways away from actually writing the proposed article.
So would it be for our next meeting to invite these property owners? Or do we at tonight's meeting prepare a package to send to those? An invite, like, so tonight, do we write that invite with what we feel is the description of what we want to accomplish?
I'll chime in. Um, I do think it's very important for them to realize what we're proposing. Yeah, I think we need to do something to have a meeting before or after this. To tell them what's going on.
And Bill, is your, um, is the assumption, I guess, to get the feedback first from the businesses and then fill out. Uh, the table one, or what is the timeline in regards to? Do, are we looking to get input first and then fill out table one, or are we looking to fill out table one as a board? And then get input on what we decide on those, you know, yes, no's, special permit decisions?
I was thinking we fill out table one as a board and then we can. Get feedback from the public and from the owners during our public hearings. Uh, but I want to make sure, and, and Matt has more experience with this, I, I want to make sure we're not going backwards. So I, my suggestion would be let our board go write down that list for the lake business district. With the column and just all of what we want there. That way we could discuss it public wise in the hearing to um, to get input.
And when are you looking to do that? Tonight or next meeting or what were, were your thoughts?
I thought it would be more of a homework assignment and then at the next meeting, we just have it.
Okay.
See, I think it's important to have input as we're basically doing this, this table. We can, we can do a really rough outline, maybe even leave some of the numbers out and say we need to fill these in. But um. I think it's really important to, to know. What is a non-starter for these owners? Because remember, we do need to get, you know, we're trying to help them out also. We're not trying to just. Tie their hands, so. We can have some kind of rough outline to send to them, but I think filling it out during or after we talk to them is, is the key. So, and the other, the other thing is, uh, you know, we can, we can send an invite out to these owners. But we have to also realize that perhaps it's summer and they're not available at our next meeting, so. Hopefully, you know, if we're relying on. Whether either they show up at our next meeting or they don't, and we're going to move forward without, with you or without you. Is not the best uh, way to pro- progress also.
Agreed. And Matt, I want to point out that the difference between table one and table two, table two is going to have all the dimensional. Regulations, um, density, height and all that. Table one is the use, so. Do we want to um, think of them as separate assignments or one that would? I'm just not sure. I think the property owners would have more concern with table two than table one. Do you agree?
I think they're both gonna, you know, both of them are going to be concerning if, if it's changing anything than what they're used to right now.
Right, and it will. Obviously, those in the business district, it would align more with what the neighborhood business district has for height and density.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. I like the way you're thinking about it, Matt, meaning obviously having the property owners in and, and really listening and. Understanding. What they're looking for. And I keep going back to the incentives and how we can make this um, as a. A positive impact on our town economically as well as aesthetically, so. Do we prepare a small package? Or is that too scary? Is it more just an invite? With a small description, a short description versus here's three pages of what we're proposing to do. Please come and sit with us.
I think a, a, a very rough outline and, and get the input from the start, because. You know, if we write up something that, you know, we're going to restrict you to a certain height right from the start. They're going to come in with some preconceived notions that this is. You know, I can see where this is going and I'm going to be against it right now, so.
Right.
You have to see what, what works best for them. You know, if they have plans going forward. We want to be able to help. Maybe move those forward, but in a, in a more positive direction to help protect the lake, so. That's, that's why I think having a really rough outline and, and just genuinely listening to them and hearing them out. And then deciding how to move forward is the best way to go.
Right, um, but we also know that if we don't, if we're not sensitive to this. We're going to see property owners with. A subdivision plan or some type of a plan eighty-one P or whatever that's going to. Put a hold on the property anyway, so.
Well, at this point, nothing's proposed, so. I'm, you know, I mean, maybe completely upfront, there's, there's really nothing. Nothing really written down yet. There's some rough outlines, but there's nothing to prevent us from going forward or not. So we want your input. We, we want to make this. We, we want to make this, you know, we want this successful for the lake and the owners and the abutters and everyone. And we're trying to get your input to make that.
Agreed. Okay. Matt, if you would allow, I could work with Erin if she's willing to prepare this rough draft and then provide it to you for a review before our board looks at it and something that could happen in the next few days, so we can get that out to the property owners. And an invite to our next meeting.
Yep, that would be good and there may be a certain attorney you may want to reach out to who has some connections with them and go, you know, make sure that he's fully informed, so. He can help facilitate this.
Yep. Agreed. See if he has an open window for tomorrow night at seven. Kidding.
In general, is there a, a sense of, of how much time you, it takes to reach out to this, uh, all of these businesses? I mean, you know.
Erin, I don't know.
Yes, um, usually they're pretty responsive, like quickly, so, um, I think there shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, and, and even if we can just ask, if they can't be there, they can at least send a, you know.
Some sort of email or something.
Yes, some, some input on something.
Yeah.
Saying what might be a non-starter, what, what might help encourage us along. We want some input, whether it's live in person or it's, you know, some correspondence. We just need to let them know that we definitely want to hear from them.
Yep.
And, and include them in this process and not, you know, to have an adversarial relationship here, so.
Send them a link to this meeting recording. Okay. That's all I have for the research and study. And I know Theo jumped in about the lake, other lake districts in Rhode Island and a few different places. So I don't really have anything else to share or review unless anybody has any questions regarding the timeline or a concern with how we're moving forward.
No, go ahead, Theo.
Yeah, just the, the very few instances I saw. There was, you know, there were dimensional limits that were sort of consistent with what we've been talking about. And, you know, and the same, uh, sort of the same cooperative approach, Matt, that, that, that you've been talking about. So that's, um, that, that's all. It was sort of very consistent and, and I, this shows that we're like pointing in the right direction with the right sort of focus and, and intention.
And, and I think once we talk to the property owners, we're going to get more to the sense of what may be some of the incentives to this forward that we can include. Cause I know right now we really don't have, and you know, we haven't really, besides a stepped approach, there still needs to be some, some restraints on that or some known parameters they can work with. Obviously, they don't want to start designing something knowing that, oh yeah, you, you be limited to 35 feet, but if you give us a hundred foot buffer, we'll give you 10 feet more. You know, obviously we need to work out what those incentives are and really listen to them. I think that's the best way to, to get that, so.
Agreed, and I think about the setback at the front, similar to what happens downtown on Main Street. It's like, well, what if this property could come right to the sidewalk with a cafe with whatever it might be, thinking of how on North Ave, where Tano is, how that sits right at the face, but it has a nice outside eating area as well as some other commercial businesses. Yep.
There's a lot. I mean, if you, if you shift all the pedestrian to along the lake, then what once was pedestrian along the street may be able to be more of a downtown-ish or, you know, a little tighter area, so. That's something to, uh, to look at, so.
I agree, and, and something that, um, again attracted me to the planning board is how do you make Wakefield more walkable with all these interesting places to stop, to shop, to work, live? And from the lake, from Vets Field, if you could walk down North Ave and there is places that you can stop at, sit, rest, eat all the way down to Albion and you hook left on Albion and then you have our art center and, and all that, you've created a draw down to downtown. And not just from our common and Rock Reed to Main Street, but you also have it from another whole direction that didn't exist a few years ago. Excellent. Okay.
All right, so you think we're we're all set with this aspect of this item for tonight?
I think so, the lights were just getting to me, sorry.
All right, so since we really don't have a lot flushed out yet, I'm still going to hold off any public comment until, informal public comment until our next meeting, just so we can get a little more outline roughed out and, and as we move forward, we can, we can fill in the blanks, so. Does everyone seem fine with that or do you feel otherwise?
Totally okay with it.
Matt?
That, yeah.
I, um, I actually respectfully disagree. I think, um, some of the pop, public feedback that we received um, a few meetings ago really helped shape our direction and our focus. And I do see its worth, um, and maybe it's limiting to time and whatever it might be, but there's not a lot of people in attendance this evening. I think it would be a good idea to just get some feedback. As long as it's focused and on this topic and doesn't speak about other projects in town, I would like to entertain public comment.
All right, Theo and Megan, how do you feel about this?
I'm, I'm open as well.
Yeah, I agree with Bill and the fact that we kind of, kind of took an informal vote last meeting and said we would allow public discussion, so I'd be open to hearing public discussion.
All right, then then we can have some limited discussion on what we've discussed, you know, what we've outlined tonight. So anyone who wants to be known. Can raise your hand, I see Bronwyn, you have your hand up. Would you?
Yes. Good evening and thank you for, um, taking public participation because I had a lot of questions during the last meeting, but was unable to ask them at the time. From my perspective, it seems to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that, that, that a shift has ta, been, has taken place since the last meeting. It, are we, are we now calling it a, a business zone? Or is it no longer the lake protection zone? It just seems to be a shift towards business, more so than even at the last meeting.
Well, yeah, there has been because I don't think it was ever roughed out as a lake protection district. What we're trying to do is, uh, is protect the lake, but there's also business, businesses in there that need to, uh, have buy-in to this. And they do own property there, so we cannot completely restrict what they do. So in order to, uh, move this forward and, and have something productive that can pass a town meeting, um, we need to look at the businesses there and help them move in a direction that is going to protect the lake.
Well, would that change then the height and density that had been discussed before?
I, do, we really haven't had a lot of discussion on height and density, so I, I know.
You've had quite a bit of, of discussion about height. I mean, height is, is integral to all of this. Uh, I mean, someone mentioned 50 feet at the last meeting a, and that was one thing I, I wanted to bring up because that's crucial. Height is, 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 is integral to a lake protection discussion. And I just feel that things have shifted away from lake protection and more towards business. And that isn't what your original intent was, is it? I'm confused.
Bill, you wanna?
Yes, I'd like to, um, through the chair. Bronwyn, I, I want to, I, I want to make sure that you were here for the, the first 15 minutes or so of the meeting where we did discuss the dimensional table, table two.
Right.
How that we're looking at these business and limited business zoned areas to be closer to what the neighborhood business is, which does limit to three stories and 35 feet.
Okay.
We're still basing it on that, yes, so that has not changed.
Okay, so, so for right now, we're still looking at a limit of 35 feet?
Yes, that's what, because we're modeling it on the neighborhood business.
Now, what about special permits? Who, who would be the granting authority for those, planning board?
I'd like it to be, and that's what I have written into, um, the draft article.
So who determines that, the vote at town meeting?
Any zoning change would be determined by the public for two-thirds vote at town meeting, yes.
Correct, okay.
Board to hold public hearings to receive input is what will help shape it before it does go to town meeting.
Okay, and let's say it passes town meeting and after the fact, someone needs a variance to do something. Who would grant or deny that variance?
The Board of Appeals is the only board I know of that can grant a variance.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right.
So if I could just interject.
Please.
It doesn't matter what we propose or what the zoning bylaws, any zoning bylaw can have a variance at any time.
I know, and that's what I'm worried about because we've seen, we've seen what happens when it undermines the intent of the bylaw.
Right, but I, I need to interrupt because it's not something we, i- it's just a fact. It's, there's nothing we can do to, to change that as far as somebody applying for variance.
Sure, I understand.
Okay.
I do understand, thank you.
They go in that direction.
Sure, I just wanted to be clear on who the granting authorities would be, thank you. If I'm following this correctly, for, for my personal interpretation is that the wording still leaves too much to interpretation. Um, and I say that because of what I've seen, pa, personal interpretation, for instance, on a variance. There's an awful lot of a personal interpretation that's left, um, up to the, um, the granting authority. So I just wanted to, to put that in to see if things can't be tightened up a little bit more. And can someone please explain to me how an overlay district is different than, than what you're doing now?
Well, we can have an overlay district, but if you're going to have an overlay district that is just completely more restrictive, it's going to be tough to get, uh, it passed. And there are ways for businesses to get around that.
Okay, but.
And, and we've seen that and we're, we're trying to move in a direction cooperatively that gets some benefit to the lake and not basically puts up roadblocks to businesses and developers and owners that forces them to do something that perhaps they don't want to do, but they have to in order to protect their rights. And we've seen this.
Oh, I, no, I, I understand. I just wanted to, to, to get really clear on what the difference is. Uh, I think it's, I agree with you, Matt, that I think it's going to be much harder to pass something piecemeal at town meeting as opposed to one concentric uh, uh, bylaw. And, and I'm glad that you're, you're aware of that. But also, you know, this is coming from me who advocates for, for public input tremendously. Why ask the property owners? Because thi, this isn't really about what they are looking for. This is really about protecting the lake and then property owners can vote yea or nay at town meeting, and that's how the process usually has worked, isn't it?
Well, I can give you an example right now of why we want to include the property owners. We have something on North Ave that a property owner had pushed to have something that was going to be a lot less than what he's ultimately going to build there. And it failed. So that's a prime example of why you want to have buy-in. Because like it or not, the property owners have certain rights that they're going to exercise. And if you push them too much, they're going to take an basically not rational decision and protect their interests.
I, I, I get it.
That, that's what happens.
Okay.
And I, I don't want to see that. I don't want to see another 40B next to the lake.
I agree.
It could happen, it could happen.
I, I absolutely agree. Um, uh, I just think that, you know, asking for the, for property owners' input is, is going to add a whole new dimension to this for you guys, so just, just so that you're prepared. I mean, I, you know, I handed to you for wanting to do it. But, and also I did have sort of more of a technical question, Matt, please. About the packet that's going to go to the property owners, doesn't that take a board vote before it can be released to the public?
It's, it's a rough outline of, of what we want to have the input on.
But doesn't that need to be approved before it goes out to the public? Approved by the board?
I don't, I don't believe so. It's, it's a, it's, it's, it's basically a letter asking them to give input on a decision that we are looking to make. So I don't think we need to vet that completely. We want to say this is, this is what we're looking at, and that's why I'm trying to not flush out so much of the details now and have a, a rough outline so that we can fill that in later. That's specifically why I'm looking to go that route.
Okay, I guess I'm asking is who approves the rough outline before it goes out to the public?
It's going to be a couple of the board members that have been working on this.
Okay. All right.
Why, I mean, is, does it need to be voted on and approved? And have a public hearing before we actually ask for public input? I, I'm, I'm, I'm being totally serious here.
I'm asking, that's all. I was just asking the question.
Okay.
But considering that it wasn't just please attend our next meeting, that it was a, that it was a, a rough outline of what you guys have been discussing, it was a question as, as far as protocol is concerned, that's all.
Well, if, if we're inviting someone to come speak at our next meeting, they would want to know roughly on what is going to be asked of them or, or asked of their input, so they can think about it before they show up and, and contribute constructively to it. So yes, we want to have a rough outline for them to, to think about.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Uh, does anyone else have any, uh, anything they want to input? Bill, I, I see you have your hand up. You can speak if you like. Bill Conley. Bill?
Matt, you can unmute him if he can't. That's happened before.
It's happened. I'm no, uh, thank you for, uh, recognizing me, uh, Bill Conley, 83 Elm Street. Uh, for the record, I am no longer president of FOLQ. Uh, I'm still a board member and I don't think anyone from FOLQ is now in the meeting. And I don't want to speak for Margaret Copie, our, our new president, who I think you know and have been introduced to. And I don't want to speak for Margaret Kopey, our our new president, who I think you know and have been introduced to. Uh, we're supportive of your actions, uh, very much so in that you're proactive. On these discussions about lake protection and, uh, you know, the balance between uh commercial and development and residential and. And building the proper protections in. Uh, we plan to send a letter, we've drafted one to the board that will give some of our thoughts. Uh, it it seems to me we certainly focus more uh when we are in proximity of the lake. Uh, the parcels that touch the lake or are near the lake. It might be a little bit hard for our organization to look. You know, and not saying it's it's not uh something that should be looked at. Uh, but the uh prospective uh development, and it is prospective. In close proximity of the lake, uh, you know, we have concern about. The subdivision properties that have already been subdivision subdivided. And we're talking really a lot of real estate here in that area. And uh what effect that subdivision having been filed and accepted would have on any of your zoning. Plans? And what it might, if there are other subdivisible properties, if there are. Actions taken that would again nullify. Uh, the changes that you're planning to uh at least propose and hopefully go forward with. So that, I think that's a concern because we learned at two hundred, four hundred Quanapawat. Uh, that we were reactive there, we weren't proactive, so you're doing the right thing. It's just there, there can be things done such as subdiv- uh subdivision filings that. Uh, probably need to be factored in as you're looking at what you ultimately will end up with. And I didn't hear the very first part of the meeting, uh, the discussion with Tom Mullen, and I don't know if he had any comments. On uh, you know, those parcels that have been subdivided and the effect of what you might want to do with it. So that's basically uh, you know, a question I have. We are supportive, we want to pay attention. I think there's a, uh, we think there's a role for twenty thirty in this as well. And we hope to get you some input, written input uh that, uh, you know, may be helpful relative to our organizational view. So thank you, uh, thanks for the time.
All right, thanks, Bill. And that's, well, I understand that some certain property owners have already filed the. Subdivisions to lock in their zoning, so they they always have that in their back pocket. So this is why I I'm sort of focusing on. Trying to work with them and give them something that they may see is more of a benefit to abandon. Um, their zoning freezes and and support this and move forward in a in a productive manner, so. Um, we all have to realize that, yes, they can act. Uh, with what they've already done with their zoning freezes for for years to come. But if we make something that's uh attracted to them and beneficial to the town, then it's a win for everyone. So. So tha- that's why I'm 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 kind of pushing for this, to get their input. And not be such the hammer that they take that route and the other parcels that haven't done that yet. Jump and do that now, so.
Yeah, Matt, another thought I I had, and I think you uh mentioned in your comments. Uh, another forty B on the lake. I'm not aware of a forty B on the lake. Is there a forty B on the lake?
No, I'm I'm saying that that always is a um, an option.
So a risk or an option or a possibility, okay.
Correct, yeah, i- if if. If people are pushed into a corner, they're gonna. They're gonna take whatever it means to protect their investments, unfortunately, because that that's human nature. So and and that's one of the options they have, and we all should be mindful of that because it can happen. So. All right, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Joanne, uh, you're next, welcome.
Thank you. Um, I had a question too about the um, the process for. Public notice of a potential zoning change. Is there a standard procedure for letting the public know that? You're considering a zoning change. Um, be- because when you were talking about the property owners. Sending them a special package. Um, it would seem to me that there there would be a standard process for letting the public know. About a potential change so that other people like the neighbors who are also impacted. Um, would have some notice, like the Z B A does this. With a butters and not even a butters, but people that are a couple of doors down from a property. When they are um going to grant um special permits or variances. So they have a process for that kind of thing. Uh, maybe that's something that Tom Mullen um would would know something about. It just seems to me that um it doesn't really seem right to me to give. The property's owners, even though they are property owners, I get that. Um, but it it seems like that's kind of giving them a little bit. Um, more priority than I think is is really appropriate, I guess.
Well, well, that's why, once, once we have the proposed wording of a. An article to be included on town meeting. Uh, then that the exact language uh needs to be advertised. And there's a, it's it's written down in statute what needs to be done. And yes, unfortunately, um, there is no mechanism for directly notifying a butters. Like if someone was going for a variance, uh, where everyone within three hundred feet had to, has to be notified. Uh, as we've learned through many zoning changes, um, it's completely optional whether. Property owners in a butters are notified. So um, I don't think we could notify all the butters to these affected properties. But we would do what is normally done, which is uh posting in the paper and postings on the website and. Maybe if people subscribe to notices uh through the town website, they would get it that way too, but. Uh, I don't think we would do a special mailing and certified mail to everyone. Uh, that might about this district because that would uh, that would get kind of expensive, so.
Don't the property owners already know that this is going on, this discussion?
No, not unless, not unless people have tuned into our meeting, because right now it's. It's basically informal, we're talking about it. Yes, we're talking about it in our meeting, that's. That's a Zoom meeting and will be aired later, but. And unless people read our notices, they really, that's the only way they 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 know what's going on. So once, once the wording is set, then it will be advertised in the paper record for a couple consecutive weeks. Uh, and basically that's all that needs to be done, and I don't think uh. The town's gonna spend any more money to go above and beyond that. But we're gonna do our best to notify property owners, the ones directly affected, which is more than is usually. More than usually has happened in the in the case when people have zoning changes done.
Okay, um, the other thing was that I know there was also discussion. About the um, the building height not being higher than the buildings are today. Um, has, I mean, you know. I I you, I guess we haven't decided, or you haven't decided on the thirty-five feet in that dimensional table yet. But has that ever been done before where you make um a specification like that where? A build, you know, they cannot build higher than a building already is today? And how would that be done if you wanted to do that?
So meaning like at the Lakeside Office Park, they can't go in. They can't go to the thirty-five feet, they have to maintain what they have currently existing right now?
Yeah, or the American Mutual Building, um, I think that might be higher than thirty-five feet at certain points.
I mean, that is something that, you know, we could consider, but it would probably be a non-starter for. For, but at least the property owners, I and and again, if they see that this is coming. They're gonna do whatever they need to do to protect their rights and and circumvent the process, so. Again, we're we're not trying to push people to do something irrational, we're we're trying to. Get something here that benefits the town.
Right, but it sounds like we're kind of afraid of them doing something irrational when. I mean, I I think people are talking to the property owners and have a sense of. How they feel. I I suspect there is some knowledge of that out there. Um, in terms of the thirty-five feet, thirty-five feet is still pretty high. I suspect that the Market Street. Retail development there, I don't think that's thirty-five feet high.
No, they're all single-story, except for the residential, they're all single-story buildings there.
Yeah, so I mean, I I'm just saying that. This, this idea that thirty-five feet is the right number. Um, it sounds like kind of an assumption that thirty-five feet is the number to go with. I'm just questioning that.
So you're thinking maybe. Lower than thirty-five feet?
Well, I'm thinking, no, what it is today, because some of them are higher than thirty-five feet and some of them are lower than thirty-five feet. It's just an idea that I don't, you know, I I I think that's something to be considered. You know, whether, I mean, i- is it fair that some of them are higher than others today? Probably not. Why are some of them higher today than others? Probably because they got a variance or, I don't know. Because they're in different business, they're in different districts today is probably why some are higher than others.
Well, I know in the American Mutual Building, that was grandfather, they, you know, that was built before zoning up there, so they built that. There's another building, the other office building next to that, I don't know exactly what the height of that is, but. It's probably to the fifty-foot limit, is is would be my guess.
I think it it's in the forties, the um one hundred building.
All right, um, do you have anything else right now, or?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any comments they'd like to add at this point? All right, so I think we're gonna move forward with um the plan to uh. Informally request that some of the property owners and actually any o- other butters that want to. Comments on uh. How we should move forward with the heights and uses so that we can better flush out. Uh, wording on uh a potential zoning change. And we'll just, we're gonna discuss that at our next meeting on June twenty-second. All right. All right, I'm gonna move on to item four, items not anticipated by the chair. I only have uh basically one thing is uh the Glen Dale Abs, Glen Dale Road subdivision. Uh, I talked to Bill Hannigan, um, he's been in discussions with uh. D P W about uh some issues up there with the ledge that they found. Where the proposed rain garden that is uh. To the north of the of the building that they're doing on the lower side by the wetlands or by the by the. Area that is uh wet, I'm not gonna say wetlands because it's not officially wetlands. Um, they're gonna put in a infiltration system and. He's had discussions with Eric and Bill and all, and uh. They have reviewed that and have agreed that uh after reviewing his his proposed plans and his um. Drainer's calculations that there'll be no adverse effect. So Bill reached out to me, he was gonna get some plans together and in. Formally submitted to us just so we can see it. It's a minor modification that we really don't need a vote on. But he wanted just keep the board fully abreast of that, so. That's uh the only issue issue I have right there. So I know I discussed a couple of things with with Aaron that we're gonna wait until next week or our next meeting about. Email addresses and things like that, but um, and everything else, I don't know if anyone else has anything? No. Aaron, you have anything to?
Actually, yeah, I do have one thing. Tom Mullen did um apologize for not getting back to us regarding the email that Aaron sent. Regarding. My um concern about the special permit. Board, um, the, I'm sorry, getting too late to think, the. Yeah, so he apologized for not getting back to you, but it's in his pile of emails to respond to.
Yeah, so um, me, Tom, Steve and um. Maybe another person in town are gonna meet and talk about it. Figure it out.
Thank you.
Erin, do you have anything else, or are you all set?
Good.
Okay, thank you. Theo?
Yeah, I um, I just want to echo uh Bill's plug for Vision twenty thirty, uh, that's uh. Uh, June twenty-first, um, and June twenty-first, I think is also the deadline for formal application uh for the. The Planning Board vacancy and um, um, right, and I I know we talked uh last meeting a little bit. About um sort of potentially fleshing out uh future agenda topics. Sort of as we get, I think, past some of this, so that we're. Just uh more proact- proactively putting things on the agenda for future discussion. That would also sort of uh be built in and would cue people up to. Be able to plan ahead to attend a certain meeting if they know we're gonna have um. Uh, a discussion about special permitting granting authorities or 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 topics like that. So that that would help, I think, get to Bronwyn and Joanne's uh comments about potential disparate. Future communication. So that's, that that's it for me.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, seeing no other comments, uh, item five is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, second one by Megan. Okay, roll call vote, uh, Theo?
Adjourn, yes.
Uh, Megan?
Yes.
And Bill Spalding?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so uh, thank you. Our meeting is officially adjourned and our next meeting will be June twenty-second. Twenty twenty-one, all right, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Everybody, thank you.